Call the meetings order. You guys can leave if you don't want to talk. I'm just joking. Uh, town itself with the joint department of public works subcommittee town council meeting Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, six P M. Veterans meeting room. Uh, note, it's possible a call in the town council may be present and discuss agenda items, but voting rights shall be limited to subcommittee members. And also note that items listed which may be discussed at the meeting are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items may not not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Oh, cow, council Daniels.
Present.
Council Shania, citizen member.
Present.
Lazo, citizen member Cody, absent. Council, uh, member, uh, Jasmine Remus, absent. Uh, we will be adding an agenda item. If you want to do that now, you wanna?
Uh, if you wanna, if you want to just have a brief conversation about it. So, I just asked the chair, um, and then Pete's aware of this as well. Um, you working with the police chief, it went over to the traffic commission last night that, uh, we've had two pedestrian accidents in the intersection here at LM and Main Street. Uh, the recommendation of the traffic commission, we've had these conversations with council for a number of time, a number of conversations about the traffic signaling and all that, and restoring that right turn signal. Uh, based on the safety hazards that have occurred, the chief has recommended that that uh, signal change be, um, completed, that D V T Pete, uh, Butch and, uh, the chief will be working on that. We can have that accomplished as soon as possible. So the question is, uh, do you want to go to council? I, I don't think it needs to. I think, I believe we should just move forward with that. It's been a conversation. It is a safety hazard. Again, two pedestrians in just this pet suite.
What are you, Thomas, connecting on?
Yeah.
It's a week, they're a week out too, so if like, say we do it today, it'll be a week because they got to order the new light and stuff.
So.
So I can go over the details with you.
Right, so they could do the, if, if it's okay with the chair or chairman or council not.
I'm good.
Okay, so I just want to bring that as an update. I said I would bring it up tonight if it's good.
Any, any question? Joe, would you have your hand?
Uh, thank you, Chair, for you. I think we should go ahead and, uh, and do it. It's a safety issue.
Yep.
Okay.
The chair.
Anybody else got any questions?
Alright, so we'll put that in motion. I'll put it in an email to, so it does, that we have it on record and, uh, we'll.
Yep, I'll post central mass signal tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, agenda item number three, review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Robert LaMoth as the director of public works for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, pending successful completion of employment requirements, entertain a motion to recommend to town council confirmation.
Full move, second.
Alright, discussion, town manager.
Uh, thank you. As you're aware, uh, we did post this position. We had three act applicants. All have ties to the town of Southbridge, all brought a variety of different levels of experience. Um, and each of them had, um, very good qualities, uh, that, for the work in the Department of Public Works. Um, we had, uh, three members of my team do, uh, what, and what we do with most of, uh, our appointments is, uh, have a preliminary interview with the candidates and then they're ranked, and then a recommendation to me for a second interview. Uh, the individual, Robert LaMoth, came in for the second interview. Uh, Robert, uh, has strong ties to the town of Southbridge, owns a home here in Southbridge, has been living, uh, for the past couple decades out in New York. Um, has a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering, a master, an M B A, a wealth of experience in project management. Um, I think the most impressive thing is that for the past twenty-five years, he's been working at the same company, doing a lot of project management. Um, high-level infrastructure-type projects with buildings, uh, some water sewer, uh, roads within those projects. He has a project management certification. Um, and he was the very strong recommendation, uh, from the, from the preliminary and then with the follow-up. And my, my second interview that we had, we had, uh, Robert come in and go around with our interim director, Butch Jackson, to all the facilities because I wanted the candidate to make sure that they had a full understanding of all our operations here. Because one of the things from the previous individual, uh, that held that position was that the belief that the job changed, and the job did not change, there's just a lot of, that we ask of our D P W, uh, director. A lot of tasks, a lot of management, um, water sewer, so it's a, it's a daunting task. So I'd wanted the individual to make sure that they fully understand what they're getting into. The one thing that I did see, uh, from Robert is that he did a lot of homework. Uh, not only because he's familiar with Southbridge and has lived here and knows, uh, a lot of us, was the fact that he did a lot of uh, research about different facets of our, um, operations already, uh, when he applied for this job. You know, simple things like knowing how much, um, effluent that we put through the wastewater treatment plant. And, uh, one of the things was, okay, we're, we're permitted for this amount, average this amount, but what happens in a big rainstorm? And we have the excursions, what's our plan? That is a topic that, as long as I've been on council and now, now town manager, we've talked about I N I forever. And so for somebody to come in, do that kind of research and bring that to the table, um, uh, I, I felt showed a strong commitment for the, uh, the homework that was done. And then furthermore, on the water, he knew a lot of the projects that were going on the water treat, uh, the water facility and where we were that, with that. Um, the big thing too was the fact that we have a awful lot of projects that we're undertaking and we're fortunate that we're going to retain Butch as, also as the project manager. But not only this project, but future projects that we have on the books. And the question, uh, from Robert to me was, do we do any pre-estimation when we put these projects forward? And we've never had that ability to do pre-estimation, so just to bring in that thought process to the town, uh, was very, uh, strong in my, my opinion. Um, and then we had a, a, a conversation about capital projects and how we would approach capital projects and how we would balance it. Um, and, uh, I'm just really looking forward, uh, to working with Robert over the next, uh, several years because I, I do bring, believe that, uh, and know that he brings a, a lot of background, uh, and strong, uh, knowledge base, uh, for the, for the position and now as we build this team in the D P W with Robert as the D P W director, with Butch, and then we would seek when he lands, if so confirmed, uh, let him pick and, uh, solicit for his deputy director. So it's with my recommendation that, uh, you support this recommendation and Robert's here tonight.
I would like to say after reading Mr. Lamott's credentials, he's second to none, I would definitely support this man. Thank you.
You're just welcome. Welcome aboard. Wonderful, wonderful resume.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I've known Bob for a long time, going back when he was probably born.
You were a farmer.
Right, and I've known his family for, forever also, and I wasn't sure it was the same person I was applying that I knew. And, cause when he went away, that was kind of like, we didn't see him only on visits and stuff. Looking, looking at the, uh, resume and his qualifications that he had, I think it's, it would be a shame if we didn't retain him and make him our D P W director. I think he'll be a good fit for the community. And it's not like he's going to come into a community he doesn't know, even though he was gone, he still was here. So I think he'll be a good, good fit for our community. Council Lazo.
Uh, Jack and I, when the applications were coming in and, uh, Bob, Bob's saying that he would like, I looked up at the sky and said, hey, thank God, you know, he dropped into Southbridge and he's coming back home. And as I always say, you know, Southbridge first, I eat, sleep and live that. Um, one of the things I always say is, the man can leave Southbridge, but Southbridge never leaves the man. I want to welcome you home.
Thank you.
Your dad, your family, your ancestors to Southbridge, and I'm sure you'll carry on. That tradition. Thank you.
Anybody else out there? Would you like to say something?
Thank you very much. I'm honored. And I'm, uh, proud to be back. My family's looking forward to moving back to town in the house. And, uh, I hit a couple potholes, so I think I lost the front end of my car, so I'm gonna make sure the roadways get fixed.
So we got a new hot box coming, so I hope we can use it. Any other questions for the, audience or the table?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. I'm just curious, have you already put together an entry plan or are you gonna just see what's going on first, get the lay of the land and then? An entry, an entry plan?
Well, my plan of attack as D P W director?
Mm-hmm.
I have some ideas in my head. Um, I like to do, uh, weekly meetings with the team. I do want to go out and observe more streets. I'm sure there's more potholes, what roads uh, need to be, uh, either repaired, patched, or full remediation. I did look, uh, two weeks ago after my second interview, there was a report from twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one that, uh, a company from Rhode Island did, an assessment on every road. So my plan of attack is the right scope of work with which is help, and I'm going to attack it so that what needs, what streets are in town, what needs what remediation?
Mm-hmm.
Put the scopes to work together, you know, and now that you're going to be like in June, July, you know, you, usually these projects were paving, you're, you're doing this in February. So you lost a little time because asphalt, asphalt plants and the contractors are really, really busy at this time. So my thought process is we would put it out to bid, but have different options, option A, option B, option C, give it to three or four competitive bidders. See what they come back with, with timing durations. And then based on that, I'm thinking maybe a patching guy, depending on the cost, patching guy gets scope A and full remediation is like, you know, scope B, maybe another contractor gets that depending on the cost when they split it all out for us. And then C is if it just needs a top coat, so remove two inches of, of the top coat and put in two inches rather than remove all six and put in four and two. So that's my thought process, process, so that's what I'm kind of thinking about before I start. Uh, I'd like to get that printed out though. I was looking at, or from the town, I don't know, the computer and so. But I have done my homework. I have some thoughts. Uh, usually you can get some cost savings if you, you know, the contract that you get out to, if you do all the work. But if you give me all, if I give you A, B and C, what's the savings? Right? Always just tell me what A and B and C are. So the goal is, maybe I have multiple contractors out there working in different facets of the town. I want to tie up one whole section. That's my thought process.
Fair. Thank you for considering Southbridge. It's obvious that you've given it a lot of thought. It's obvious that, uh, that you're interested in the town, that you care about the town, and like Scott says, Southbridge first. Um, that's, that's wonderful that you're thinking of the town and that you're involved already, that you're eager to go. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Butch, I think your one biggest challenges is in educating him in new code with their gas water. I think that's going to be one of the biggest challenges because if you ride all the, all through the town, you're going to see new codes there. So I think that's the biggest challenge and again, welcome aboard and any other questions? All those in favor of supporting us? Posed? None? Inane? Us? See you Monday night?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll probably bring you up, so maybe you could speak a little bit more. Alright. Agenda item number four, review, discuss town manager's recommendation to provide ten thousand dollars stipend to D P W operations manager Pete Proventia for the additional duties performed during F Y twenty-five, due to vacancy of a deputy D P W director's position in assistance to the part-time intern D P W director. Entertain a motion to recommend town council for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion Jeff.
Thank you. So, you know, many, many of you and others have, uh, approached me, um, and not, a, a, as well as our own office with, uh, Dean and myself, uh, regarding, uh, Pete's additional duties and, um, things that he has done over the last year. Maybe even more than a year because I've been here nineteen months and we've had not had a deputy D P W director, so Pete has pretty much been, uh, the de facto uh, deputy D P W director, uh, servant with a lot of capacity. Uh, and, uh, we just felt that, uh, he has done a great job, uh, in all the additional duties, um, that he is taking on, uh, you know, tree warning, information, M S four program, you know, and all that, failed inspections. He's been a great, he's a phone call away for many of us in the town. If we ever need anything, we pick up the phone and a lot of times, uh, I'll pick up the phone and say, hey, um, Plimpton Street, Facebook, and be, I already took care of that. Uh, so, uh, I certainly appreciate all the efforts and this is just our small token to, we, uh, to compensate him for those additional duties that he has worked. Um, he didn't seek, um, this, this is something that I believe we should, um, give in recognition of the additional duties that he's taken on in the last, uh, year, year and a half.
And it was.
I'm all set.
I found, I fully support this. Uh, I've dealt with Pete on multiple occasions over the past year, uh, since being on council. And it was never, never said that, uh, how, I'll see what I can do. It's always, it's, I'll take care of that and it's always been done. Uh, he's also, has called me at nighttime from home. Uh, if he didn't get back to me earlier in the day, he's always called me back and he's always fixed the problem. It wasn't something like, oh, we can't do that, I don't have the time. He's, he's always found that and he works beyond the four o'clock in the afternoon. So, uh, I thank Pete for the hard work that you've done. Even the men that work there, you know, they are all working hard. And I support this one hundred percent. Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair, for you. Pete, uh, we, we are proud to announce you're from Southbridge. Uh, when the snowstorm is in, Pete in the truck with the plow and sanders, when he drive around and see something, he doesn't call, he do it himself. A lot of, uh, people in the past, they drive around with a truck, no plow, no sanders and this guy, he's always ready. He never called for backup. He do it, he continue to do it himself. Uh, he never too good for any phone call, residence or citizen, low to, to high. Always pick up the phone, always listen to the people, always there for them. Uh, I think that guy deserves twenty thousand, not ten thousand. Because we save the town a lot of money, uh, by, uh, taking a lot of responsibility when he's doing and the stress. I believe he deserves twenty thousand. I will, I will, uh, I would like to recommend to update the ten thousand to twenty thousand at least. Thank you.
Council Lazo.
I agree with everything Council Dow said except for the twenty thousand, but anyway. You've got to save some, uh, you know, to take care of the reorganization. I just want to say this. Since I've gone on council and Jack, uh, is the manager and I know Johnny, yourself and the council that's sitting around here, we're in a rebuilding of the management of D P W. And Pete is solid, what I call solid, he's not going anywhere. We've got LaMoth who is going to be solid. Butch Jackson is solid. So when you reorganize, we need people in the office, the deputy director, we understand that. So I like that going forward, Pete, you're worth every nickel. You, but our D P W as a whole has been doing an outstanding job. Our problem is in the management of the reorganization. We're going to get there. You're going, you're going to lay out what you want and you're going to get the support in this council and the manager, because that's the theme concept that we're trying to build. And, uh, and so you got the backing to go forward, but when you have somebody like Pete that's working out of grade, to be fair to any employee that works out of grade for a long period of time, never be afraid to come see the town manager and say, look, I've got this guy out of grade, this person left. And, uh, we, we need to be fair with our workers and our employees. So going forward, I'm, I'm definitely in support of that now. I agree with Joe, I just want to save a few dollars, uh, maybe a deputy position in the admin.
Council Dow has the ability to change the vote on Monday night if he, I can muster the support.
How much does that push the extra thing out?
To be honest, you know, let's, let's be fair with our, our, uh, people working for the town, you know?
Yeah.
And he stick with it. He didn't give up. He didn't walk away. He's there, you know?
Town manager.
Thank you, for you. Uh, you know, it, you know, I, I understand what Council Dow's coming. There are many others in the D P W that deserve just as much for the hard work that they've done through, through a year of a lot of turmoil.
Yep.
I mean, um, I appreciate every one of them, um, Liza as well, as well that was here tonight.
Just got to say, the one sitting behind me.
Right, who has, uh, who, who, who really, you know, and, and we've had conversations about all our admins and, and what work they do in different departments and you could say, you know, D P W has their own, uh, admin tasks that they do and then you can go over to the fire department and you say, well, um, um, the, the person in that role that manages all our I O D work and things like that, you go to the police department where they manage the grants and details and, which is a complicated thing. So we're very, very fortunate that we have, uh, the individuals that we have working for the town. Um, and I thank them every day and try to best support them as best I can. So yes, this is Pete working out of grade and that's what he's been doing. And we have to take a look at all compensation for some of our other positions, make sure they're well within the scope of what, uh, we're doing and, and that's a task that I think council has talked about compensation, uh, reviews and all that, but we have so much on our plate right today, um, that we're trying to stop those on base level. It's not fast enough, but we will, we will get there. But, um, I thank everybody in the D P W for all the hard work because it's been, it's been a tough year. For them, in, in the house and me as town manager dealing, um, with some of that, so I thank them all. So that's all I have. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, um, most of you guys know me, John Trigg, I'm D P W, long time in the play. I want to, I'm here tonight to support, of course, Bob's appointment in both Liza and Peter. Um, I see what Liza goes through with being shorthanded and the help that she gets. I see what Pete does and I've had conversations with Council Shania. I know I told Dave Adams before when he was council, even Scott. He leads by example. That's the key. I'm a longtime employee, looking at retiring in a few years. I want to see this department better than when I came. We have to, or you have to, keep the good employees there, the structure. Bob's going to be a great asset. Pete's a good asset because he leads by example. Liza just sits there and grinds it out all day long. You've got to, you've got to do something to keep these guys. I'm here to support them, not only as a person, but as a union member. So I have no, I'm just here to support. Ten thousand, yeah, that's, that's nice, but, you know, the position used to be an hourly wage. When he's there with us, you know, it's twenty-four, forty-eight hours, he's not getting an overtime. I mean, if you broke it down, what does that actually come out to? Probably not that much per hour. So, I'm just thinking, I'd like to say, consider it in the future, maybe do a little bit more and keep our key personnel. The guys who have another fifteen, twenty years to stay. We don't have the turnover we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a quick one. This is my second term as an interim. The first one was a little bit tougher than this one. This one was a lot easier because of these two. I came in and as an interim and things were kind of, it was an instant. He, the guy left one day and I was there the next and it was pretty much seamless. I mean, Pete's, Pete's been on top of everything, the snow and ice, he's been, he's great. He's on top of the snow and ice. I'll call him for, if Pete thinks he's going to snow, then I don't worry, I'm all set up, you know, the guy's coming in, blah, 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 he's all set up. Liza's the same way. I come in, everything, I need the signs right there, ready to go. And she's been filling in a lot, but Hannah did too when Hannah was here. So it's a lot of chapter ninety stuff and so I just echo what they're saying.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor, the motion is presented. Posed? None?
I'd like to just say something, if I could. So, I remember when I first took this job, there was, there was some people that doubted me and stuff. And I, I knew in my heart that, I've lived in this town now for twenty-eight years. I grew up in childhood. I hung out with your sons. I've, you know, I know pretty much everybody in town. The thing that, number one is, when I took this job, I took it because I knew I was, I would be successful. I just knew that I wanted to be in town. I wanted to be here long-term. I've told Scott and Scott's right. I'm not going anywhere. I'm forty-six years old. I started three, four years ago. I want to stay here and retire someday here. And I appreciate the opportunity you guys gave me to get this position and do what I do. But the most important thing, like he said, I lead by example, but I can't do this without my crew. My crew has come so far over the last year and a half, it's unbelievable. When I first came here, there was nothing but drama. There was a lot of negativity, okay? And I always said, and I've said to multiple people, Angela will tell you, I'm a big morale guy, and Liza will tell you. I don't like Debbie Downs. We just come in, we do our job. I can't do my job without Liza, Butch and everybody else. So I, I do lead by example, but I love the town. I, I consider myself a kind of, I grew up here because I moved here when I was seventeen. So I take a lot of pride in it. And people go, I paid taxes, Lord, I lived here too, and I care just as much as you do. I don't want to see couches thrown at the airport or, I don't want to see our roads falling apart. So I, I kind of take it to heart. So when somebody calls me, I want to fix it. I don't want to see somebody. It was just like when Shane called me and said, we had somebody get hit. Butch called me, I called central mass, boom, got the ball rolling, here we are. But instead of talking about it, and I know that, I'm not saying anything bad about the past, but let's fix it. You know what I mean? Let's not talk about it. Let's, I know there's things you got to do to get prepared to fix it. You got to go through things. But, you know, staying on top of it, I take a lot of pride in that. But I can't do it without my guys, including Liza. I look forward to working with you very much. So I want to say thank you to everybody in my crew, seriously.
Alright. Um, agenda item number five, review, discussing transfer of fifty thousand dollars from capital, sewer capital reserve six zero zero four four zero five eight three zero 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 dash eight nine five zero zero to sewer solid waste collection six hundred, four hundred forty-four, five twenty-nine, one zero zero five solid waste collection. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Town manager.
Thank you. So this was one of the things that came up when, um, Casella used to pay, pick up the sludge and dispose of it when we, they provided us those services. We now have to pay for that. We just, we didn't budget it this year within it, but we had bu, money budgeted in our reserve fund. So this is a transfer within the reserve fund and it is reflected in next year's budget. It roughly costs about sixty-nine hundred dollars per load. We call when the load's ready and they take it up, take it away and dispose of it. Um, so right now we're in the negative about eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars. Um, this is just to get through the rest of the year. Um, and once we figure out budget, how many, um, actual disposals we have to do of that excess waste that we haven't processed and that we have to get rid of.
Questions? John, number four. I just got, what's the difference between, other than numbers?
Yeah.
Seven and five. They're both doing, dealing with the sewer capital reserve to collection systems. One solid waste collection, the other one sewer collection.
The collection system is the actual underground collection, the pipes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Alright. So, um, for the discussion, all those in favor to send this up to council? Posed? None? Alright, number six, review and discuss a transfer of fifteen thousand dollars from sewer capital reserve six hundred four four zero five eight three zero 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 eight nine five zero zero to sewer solid tech support capital six hundred four four zero five eight three zero 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 two five five eight three tech support capital. Entertain a motion to recommend to council for approval.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Town manager.
Thank you. So when we were going out for the new contract, uh, we had and I had proposed the budget, we had taken all those, the, uh, tech support, uh, the capital accounts. And we had not funded those for the fiscal year and said, once we get the new contract, we'll figure out where we're going to reallocate the money. So this tech capital is actually the utility cloud that they use for the system. It's an annual maintenance cost of approximately ten thousand dollars. So we, we had intentionally zero funded it and said, once we get the new contract and figure out how that contract's going to lay out, that we would, uh, do any transfers out of the reserve fund. So that's the, uh, reason for that one. So that's the reason for that one.
Questions? Questions from the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None? Number seven. Review and discuss transfer of $20,000 from Sewer Capital Reserve 600-440-583-000-89500 to Sewer Solid Waste Collection 600-440-520300. Sewer Collection System. Intend a motion to recommend Town Council for approval.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you. Um, so we're doing this as a preliminary transfer from the reserve fund to that account. We have some research to do, but we want to be able to balance out the end-of-year accounts. I think when I looked through this sewer collection system, a lot of this had to do with the Sun Belt generator that we used to have on South Street. But then we purchased the generator, we finally had it installed. So we have a large amount of encumbrances in that account. And once we unencumber that or liquidate it? Correct? Is that the correct term, Liza? Liquidate it. We may be in the positive and not need this, but it's just a transfer because it isn't a negative right now and we just want to be proactive so we can close out the books accurately.
Discussion? You, John? From the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None? Intend a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.